Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Limmington Select Board Meeting, July 31st. We will call the meeting to order at 7:02, and let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Zorlag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
Thank you very much. We will look to approve the warrants for week ending July 24th, 2025. Week 31 payroll warrant number 64 for $45,233.46. Any appropriations warrant number 65 for $13,814.42. For a total of warrants 64 and 65, $59,047.88.
I make a motion to approve warrant 64 and appropriations warrant 65.
I will second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Thank you. Purchase order requests. Who did them last week? David did.
Okay, yeah, I can do it. That's fine. Purchase order requests. Fire and EMS, a request to pay boundary EMS supplies, $1,067.32. A request to pay black oak repair, parts and repair for unit 10, $1,120.58. A request to pay Wild One Motorsports for an AC recharge, $367.46. A request to pay Sleeper's Market for batteries, $19.99. A request to pay Paul's Alignment for an alignment, $120. And a request to pay MFSI Jake's Instructor Certification, $350.
I'll make a motion to pay purchase order requests for fire and EMS.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor then. Thank you.
Municipal Complex, a request to pay WB Mason for paper products, $211.97. A request to pay Modern Modem Waves, one-year Bluehost, $263.88. And a request to pay MMA Town Manager, FOFF Webinar, $40.
What?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay purchase order requests for Municipal Complex.
I will second that. All in favor.
Davis Memorial Library, a request to pay Amazon for office supplies, $65.09.
I will make a motion to pay Davis Memorial Library purchase order requests.
And I will second that. All in favor. Thank you.
Public Works, a request to pay white signs for signs, $81.09. A request to pay Standish Auto Parts for hydraulic system parts, $133.05. And a request to pay sleepers fittings for the plow truck, $20.64.
I will make a motion to pay purchase order requests for Public Works.
And I will second that. All in favor. Thank you. Select Board Weekly Activities. All right. Well, I guess the first thing that we will do, I'll write it down. So our Select Board Assistant has gone on to bigger and better things, and we wish Nikki well on her new opportunities and the best of luck in her new role. She will definitely be missed by all of us. And having said that, we will vote to accept her resignation. So we'll need a motion for that.
I make a motion to accept Nikki's resignation.
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, just wish you the best of luck. And thanks for your service here for the community.
Yes, yes. We thank her very much for everything that she did. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Thank you. We could do updates. We can, well, why don't you guys talk about this afternoon?
What we talked about.
This afternoon in office.
We met with O'Donnell's today about the reassessment for the town. Tried to get more information on when it's going to start, how many people, and where they're going to start at. I remember the questions, Bonnie. So as of right now, he's, they can put people on the ground, up to probably two to three people. We don't have a concrete date yet, but it's going to start here shortly. He just needed approval from us to start going. We went over some other things that we're going to consider for annual upkeep of the town assessments as we go forward and put them under contract for that. So for right now, it's just the reassessment for a contract. So what they're looking at doing is having at least up two to three people on the ground once we, blessings and stuff. Vehicles will be marked, the people will be marked, they'll be carrying badges. They'll be going to each individual home. They'll try to be making, like we said before, contact with the homeowners prior to doing anything. If no contact with the homeowners, they're going to start measuring. If they get contact with the homeowners, they'll either ask to see the home so they can reassess it, or if the homeowners don't want them in the home, then hopefully the homeowners can answer some questions, so.
I'm sorry, in the home?
Yep.
Inside?
Yeah.
You don't have to let them in, but you can answer a lot of questions.
Yeah.
They're just trying to get the most accurate assessment of the town people. So you don't, and once again, if you don't want them in your home, you don't have to, and that's fine. And they don't, they don't take offense to that. They just, they may ask you some questions, you know, about certain things and bathrooms and this and that, and...
And they will measure, though.
Yeah, they're going to, yeah. And if you're not outside, and you've got, a lot of people have cameras, don't be alarmed. They may look in a window, or two, or three, while they're measuring. It's not, it's just they're trying to do their job and their diligence and making sure everything's reassessed properly.
Yeah, in order to be fair to everybody, they're going to need, you know, a good idea of how many bedrooms, how many baths, full baths, you know, things like that. And...
I think it's the time, I don't want to interrupt you.
Whoops, go right ahead.
Are these up?
This is kind of like, to me, it's when we know that there are cameras in a building, but then we kind of need to be reminded or told sometime that there's audio also. So have, has this, am I just behind the, am I naive about knowing that when reevaluations go on of properties, the reevaluators come into the buildings also? I think our last time was 2004, '05, '06, somewhere in there. I was, I was looking at that town report a little while ago, and they knocked on our houses then to come in? I guess I wasn't home that day, but...
Yeah, that's, and like I said, you don't have to, they do it, it is courteous. If you want them to, great. If you don't, you don't have to. They may ask you some questions, and that's it. And they may have somebody that tells them, no, get out. And then that's, they respect that. But they were hired as, from all of us taxpayers to do their diligence, so.
That puts me on, yes. And, you know, like, a pop-in visit can be very nice, and not all of us are ready every day for...
Yeah.
That, I haven't finished my baking and my, you know, tea prep, and I just know it's ready, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what he did say is they won't start until 8:30 in the morning.
Okay.
So, and then they will be dropping in when they're in town, here at the Town Hall, checking them before they go out on the road, so.
With the town clerks. They're going to stop in, in the mornings and advise the town office when they are in town. So they, anybody that comes in or may know, want to know, they can check with the clerk.
Yeah, if they're out and about, and people start calling the town office, then they're going to know that they're out.
Yeah.
In the town.
So if we want to really be prepared, we could come down here every morning at 8:30 and learn whether they're going to be around that day.
Yeah. And it's not, I don't think it's a thing of, it's just whether the house is vacuumed or not, it's not, they're looking, they're basically want to know if you've got Flamica countertops, or you've got, you know, quartz. It's just, it's depending on the valuation.
Is that really how we're evaluated now, about even things detailed?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you've got a...
Well, is it 1880s interior, or is it, you know, 2025?
You've got a house with an $80,000 kitchen, or a $10,000 kitchen. It's a big difference now. That's all they're doing.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
I never appreciated that they came inside the houses also.
Yeah, they're just trying to give you your best value, is all they're doing, so.
Okay, this may work out well for me, actually.
There you go.
So, yeah, we had a two-hour conversation with him today with that. And then with the other stuff that's going to be annually, he's going to get back to us on cost. So he gave us, Ben, are these up?
Yeah.
Okay. So he gave us a ballpark cost at first, and now he's going to give us a more concrete cost. Moving forward, a lot of the town assessment stuff, we'll be going to them.
The annual things would be like anybody who pulls a permit, Bonnie. After the assessment is done, and everybody's homes are valued, if anybody pulls a permit to have upgrades done, or an additional shed, or a garage, or things like that, that will change the value of the home. And so it's done now, even today, with the current assessor, or the one we just had. They would come and see who pulled permits, who's getting upgrades, they would go out and see the work that was done, right? That's what David's talking about right now. The annual thing is, you know, the updates for people's homes, additions and things like that.
And they're friendly, right?
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
They're very nice. They have, they have a multitude of towns that they do.
Thirty-five towns, I believe, he said. So, and they're local here in Limerick, so O'Donnell's. Yep, and then, yeah. What else did we speak about with him?
Yeah, just going over the add-on stuff. Patty and Bev are present.
Yeah.
Because they do a lot of the Patty and Bev.
We had the clerks here today also, because he wanted to know what the clerks can do, or what they can take over, or if the Patty or Bev want to continue doing certain things to help assist keeping costs down, then they went over that, see which ones they were going to keep, and which one O'Donnell's would take over, so. And then we found out that all, all the tax cards, we're going to keep the old ones, but new tax cards will be created without, without all the extra writings over the years. And then those new tax cards will go online, so that everybody in town could see all their tax information online, and they'd be managed, so.
And whether we all have for life encounters or not?
That won't be on your taxes.
No, no.
Generally speaking, it's...
Not that level of detail.
No, no.
It's the dimensions of the house, things like that. Garage sheds, barns, all the above.
Yeah. He also noted that, once everything starts getting done, that we were going to have meetings. So people can come in and have meetings with them. They'll set up meetings for the town to come talk to them about their estimated tax.
Yeah, once it goes through, they do their whole process, then it will, you'll receive a tax bill, a projected tax bill in the mail, and then they will open up for a two- or three-week session where anybody that has questions, concerns, comments, makes a meeting, they'll come meet right here at Town Hall with you, go over anything you may have questions about. So you'll know pretty much your tax bill before it's even committed. So before tax commitment.
In April.
In April, yeah, they'll have them.
Because usually they, yeah, things are in that ballpark area, yeah. So it's going to be like through December, I think, before they get done visiting all the homes. And then all of that input work is done into the, into their system, and then they'll have meetings.
His projection is to get it before snow falls, all the homes.
Before when?
Snow falls.
Okay, great. I didn't identify myself before, I'm sorry, Bonnie Lord-Loughlin on Cape Road. You were just saying what Bev and Patty want to retain is some of their tasks and what, so I'm, I don't have any idea how that goes. So that's just something that will work out happily for everyone, Bev and Patty, and also for the taxpayers?
They will win on the conversation.
Yes.
So there's a lot of stuff like Bev does monthly already. So she's going to continue doing that, and when it's time to hand over that documentation to the assessor, then all that information's available. So she does it already, she has a routine.
Okay.
So stuff like that she'll continue to do.
Okay.
Instead of handing it over to them.
So Bev and Patty will...
Work hand-in-hand with them.
They'll do that. It won't be something that the board will do, whatever. They're apprised of what they can keep.
It's like all the deeds, and there was the rats, the deeds and rats that Bev does.
The rats?
I call them rats.
Rets.
Rets.
Oh, rents?
Rets, R-E-T-S, R-E-T-S, I believe you said.
Oh, R-E-T-S, that's important. Okay, not R-A-T-S.
Kind of like rats today. But that stuff she does monthly already. So she has a way of doing it. So he's in, they made an arrangement that she would continue doing that and just hand over the paperwork when it was time.
Got it. And they're in charge of what they want to keep doing and what they'll hand off, and it's fine with O'Donnell, and it's fine with the taxpayers, because we know that's part of what we're paying them.
Yeah, plus it'll save money, because they won't be doing it, O'Donnell's won't.
Okay.
So our own clerks will be doing it, so, yeah.
A win-win.
Win-win.
But, you know, basically, we're trying to streamline things where we can and digitize where we can.
Yeah.
Digitize.
Yeah. That was a big part of our morning.
Yeah, that was a pretty part of the afternoon, you mean.
Yeah.
It's another way to keep your taxes down.
Correct.
Rats.
Rats.
Absolutely. Do we want to do department updates, or do you want to wait to do that later?
Get out of the way.
You want to read them now and get them out of the way?
And then the fun.
And then we'll open up the bids. It doesn't take long to go through all of this good stuff.
So I'll start with the shopper's guide I got today, which shows the Town of Limmington is still looking for one fleet technician and one building grounds technician. It's in the shopper guide. Limmington.net, pick up job descriptions and applications online, or here at the Town Hall. The town clerk has notified us that the first half of taxes are due tomorrow. So come in and pay your taxes. We like taxes. Limmington Planning Board Agenda for August 4th, 2025. They'll be doing a conditional use permit application for Jama Pitman for building a garage shoreline zone. And Jake Smith will be discussing possible referendum change to ZBL, Alteration to Street Construction Limmington Fire EMS, week ending July 26th, 2025. Number of calls of service this week was 23. Month-to-date, 70. Year-to-date, 422. This included eight fires this week and 15 EMSs, EMSs, EMS calls. Schedule status proposal was complete for the week. Training's in-house Wednesday night was dodgeball at HB Emory. Trainings and meetings. All are welcome Wednesdays unless there is training at the fire department. So all are welcome Wednesday nights.
What time is it?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, yeah. And it's going to be at HB Emory's gym. Maintenance connected or needed. During a lightning storm, the facility lost the door lock system during one of the last couple storms here. We had a few lightning strikes around the building, so the door lock system for the fire department is down. The company came out to repair and said there is no fixing the system, and it's outdated, and new parts are not compatible. They're waiting on a report from the insurance company and a quote for replacement. Vehicles, A1 went to state inspection and AC repair, needs a steering box for state inspection. Squad 3 went to, for state inspection, passed and with no issues. Engine 7 went to state inspection, passed after replacing wiper blades. Engine 6 went to state inspection, passed, but needed a mirror replaced. Unit 10 went for an alignment, new tires and state inspection, and then passed. Engine 1 went to state inspection, needs tie rod end, part is on order. A2 will go for inspection August 1st. Engine 2 will go soon for state inspection and to finally repair whatever is wrong with it. Unit 11 will be going out for repair, to repair the exhaust leak and then get inspection. Hourly breakdown, there was a total of 468 hours used this week. Month-to-date, they are three calls ahead of last July. Year-to-date, they are 11 calls behind last year. There were four requests for mutual aid assistance this week, one medical call to Standish, and three EMS calls to Saukaby Rescue. Limmington Parks and Rec Department, current programs, Camp Momadeo, 2025 summer camp. They're finishing up week five of summer camp, with our groups taking a field trip to Aquaboggin tomorrow. Next week is our final week, and our younger campers will be going to Smiling Hill Farms. And our older campers will be going to Happy Wheels Skate Center. Pickleball lessons, pickleball open Tuesdays, Friday nights at Blake Memorial Field at 6:00 PM. Coffee social Wednesdays at the Old Town Hall from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. Momadeo is open daily, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. $10 per vehicle, or season pass is available for $50 per residents and $75 for non-residents. Open registration, registration online at LimmingtonRec.com for before and after care program for 2025-2026 school year at HB Emory. Program covers childcare from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM before school, and 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM after school. Early release days, the majority of teacher in-service days, and then they will offer vacation camps during the February and April break right at HB Emory School. Call Madison with any questions about the program, 239-9290. Fall soccer registration, teams for pre-K up to sixth grade. Information about community fall yard sale coming soon.
That's enough bad news.
What?
There's only one day left, one week left of summer camp, and then fall, fall registration date.
At least it'll cool down.
Where does summer go?
Limmington Department of Public Works, week update for week ending July 26th, 2025. Road crew, Sunday, some of the crew was called in to assist the fire department and CMP with a tree on Hanscom School Road from the storm that passed through the side of town. Roadside mulching continued on Hanscom School Road and North Road. Ditching pavement prep on Dole's Ridge Road brought on extra crew to assist with traffic on hill and curve. Some shop work was done at the end of the week. Placed gravel at driveway entrances on newly paved roads and graded Momadeo Road. Acting Director completed payroll and logged fuel slips and completed the previous work, week's updates to the Board of Selectmen. Met with the crew Monday morning to discuss plans for roadside work for the week. Confirmed paving plan with Charlie from Allstate. Paved Whispering Pines, Evergreen, South Road, and Stonecrest. Dealt with personnel matters on Tuesday. Assisted crew with traffic control on Dole's Ridge Road on Tuesday. Met with Town Manager to go over job descriptions. Checked the area of North Road and Momadeo Road after a resident came in with a complaint. Meeting with the crew and Town Manager to get their input on the direction they feel the department needs to go, and their opinion on Chief Brayley's proposals. Meeting with Town Manager regarding the budget. Worked to establish a charge account at Hall Implement for lawnmower parts. Met with transfer station crew, finished the emergency action plan, reviewed and compared the ACR with the budget, meeting with Board of Selectmen regarding new positions and posting them, which are now posted. Met with the foreman and made a list of supplies he needs, received and checked on complaint on Beaver blocking up Culver on River Road, and then passed on to the foreman, and then visits from persons inquiring about the truck driver job.
Very good.
That's all the departments today.
Okay, just, I'm going to go back over what was read last week. Bonnie, we had a technical difficulty where I guess a lot of what I was bringing up for updates didn't get on air, so.
I think the audio glitched and froze.
Yeah, so I think we're good tonight. Seems to be up and running and working as it should. So you had mentioned the agenda. The agenda that I was speaking of was one that come from Matt, the Town Manager. He gave us all an agenda that's what he wanted to talk about in chambers, and kind of go over stuff. We're inquiring where we at with computer support in our vendor that we currently are having. We also discussed and went over an illegal gravel pit issue that we have in town that the owner is looking to sell, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to go about taking care of the situation. We reviewed and approved, a review and up for approval flow chart for the public works. What that flow chart is, was a layout of who, how it starts at the top. Basically, the flow chart is the Select Board is number one. It goes down to the Town Manager, and then it goes down to each of the department heads. Deputy Clerk and Tax Collector, out front office. The Code Enforcement, the Fire and EMS, the Public Works Director, EMS, Emergency Management Director, the Parks and Rec Department, the Davis Memorial Library, and the Animal Control Officer. That's all on the same line. They all report to the Town Manager, which ultimately reports to the Select Board as needed. Broken off that, on the Fire and EMS side, Fire and EMS, we have the Assistant Chief, and then a Deputy Chief, and then the EMS Deputy Chief, and then it breaks off into the lieutenants that are already there and in place. All this is, is just a breakdown of how the town functions throughout the department heads. The transfer station, vehicle maintenance. Also, on the, on the public work side, that's where a lot of people didn't hear, we opened up a few job availabilities for this week. So the layout in the public work, right now, Emil, our Fire Chief, is the Acting Director. It's a part-time, stipend job. It's not a full-time position. So he is taken care of right now. The, the public works was behind on a lot of administrative stuff, meaning, you know...
We had audits and inspections, and just getting all that paperwork and...
It's a lot of paperwork stuff that was neglected in the past. And Emil is very thorough, so he is brought on board and basically deals directly with the administrative side. It then goes to the foreman, which is junior. He takes care of the road crew. They do the work in the town. The other two jobs that we discussed and approved in office was a maintenance or a technician to work on the vehicles. Where we're at now, Sean used to do that. Where we're at now, we don't have one. They don't do that. And if we leave it... And if we leave it to run its course, the amount that we're gonna spend on repairing these older vehicles in town is gonna be unbelievable. I mean, I can tell you, one of the, one of the trucks that we did send out, it's an appraisal of $15,000. That's just one vehicle. So if we have a technician on hand, not only will they be paid for the town, they'll work on all our Fire and E M S apparatus, D O T. I mean, our public work stuff. They will also act, they will plow in the town, they will also work side by side with the town, Fire and E M S. It's like a multi, multi-use job.
I just add to it, the proximity of the fire department and D P W., it just makes sense. It makes it easy for Emil to keep track of both departments.
Yeah.
A lot of towns, the two departments are across town, but they're side by side. So it just makes it easier for him to do that.
And it's purely, it's administrative. It's not, you know, he's not out there working with them, he's on the administrative side of it, so. The other one is a facilities maintenance. Basically, someone to oversee the town's facilities. Along with that would be mowing lawns, changing light bulbs, shoveling, anything maintenance-wise. Also, in the need of the summertime and they're working on a road, they need a flagger, you pull the maintenance guy or girl. You need somebody to plow. All these jobs require C D L. and plowing. It's just, that's how it should be. Right now, that's the only two openings that we have. And then the coming off that chart is you've got your laborers, which are, you know, the guys that get out there and do it. So that's the flow chart explained, I hope you can understand that. You know, I wanted to break it down, you had asked about it, so.
Jason, thank you, I am honored that this explanation has been directed to me kind of tonight. What, what I wanted to just share again was that eight minutes of the meetings video were missing last week. And I did communicate that with all of you. And I happened to look and see that when I looked at it, 76 views, 76 different times that video had been looked at. Three of those were me because I was trying to figure out if it was my machine or, or the video itself. And as you know, I then contacted Sauk River and then they wonderfully got back right away and said, no, indeed, there's a gap. And it has to do maybe with low bandwidth. And I am not here to make a judgment about that.
And S R T, S R T V., I think they worked through it this week, Ben has been here early. He's gone through the system.
Oh, good.
We've had it running for 45 minutes before we even went on air, just to make sure there was no glitches. And I think we're still, from the sounds, we're still on par, so.
Well, that was the other thing I was gonna ask you. I did ask you tonight if you would tell us what you were going to tell us last week. Because it was the part of the meeting that had to do with that you were going to tell the public what the Select Board had done, especially, so.
That was a lot of the breakdown was that job description, that layout. We just briefly touched base on the other two, the Buildings and Ground Technician and the Fleet Technician. That was pretty much what I expanded over that, seven or eight minutes. And then a couple of, you know, we had a full-time Deputy Chief position for the Fire and E M S. And then the, I think that was it. That was the only three positions that we spoke about in office and voted unanimously, all of us to go with.
So now we've heard that this week and it seems like, and the other part of my question was just, you know, has that, is that maybe going to be fixed? So we don't all have to.
I'm hoping so, I'm hoping that.
Seems like now it may be.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm hoping that today it goes flawlessly and everybody that's watching can hear and it doesn't drop out. So I know Ben's got a couple of tablets up out back watching to make sure.
That's great.
Because there's a 45-second gap on cable and I think there's a 30-second gap on YouTube on the live stream. So I, as I'm speaking, it's 30 seconds behind.
There's a 45, oh, there is.
And 45 on cable, so.
Oh, good, so if we say something bad, we have.
30 seconds.
Yeah. Ben's got 30 seconds to hit the buzzer, so.
What did come through loud and clear last week after the eight minutes it wasn't there? Was your nice congratulations, Jason, to the Bonnie Eagle Girls softball team. And that was great, even though they didn't succeed in their very last game, they did great.
Pulled their head up high because they did a heck of a job, I watched the game personally, so it was great.
Yeah.
Now we have one in-house, Owen Sprague is the World Series umpire down there. He is down there currently and he will be on ESPN umping the World Series game, so.
World Series of the girls softball?
Little League World Series.
Yep, absolutely, so keep an eye out for Owen, it's great to have him.
He's umpire number four.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For small Dole's Ridge Road, I just had a quick question because I missed last week, but now that you've brought up like the Deputy Chief position. Is that positions we have funding for now? They're, I'm assuming they're opening now, is that?
Yes, the E M S Directors.
To cover that from?
Absolutely, it's a rewriting of the E M S Director's position, basically. It's the Deputy Chief's position. You're gonna have Chief, you'll have Assistant Chief and then you'll have Deputy Chief. The Deputy Chief will be the full-time paid position and it will oversee more of the E M S side, but still Fire and E M S.
Okay, I was just curious because I also like the other two positions for public works, I didn't know if that was funding that.
Yeah.
Or if that was something where we had to try to come up with.
No, no, this.
Access money to.
Doing away with the full-time position and the all the full-time positions that we have lost in public works, there is, there is, the funds are there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, Rick Staples, Sleepy Hall Lane. You said Emil would be filling in a temporary position as both, I didn't quite get it, public works, public safety, public.
It's, it's, it's all laid out as public safety, public works.
Is it laid out where I can see it, like I'm much more visual than I am?
So before the Public Works Department Director was vacated, he was already the Fire Chief and the E M A. Director.
Okay, yeah.
That was the third one's E M A. Director, so.
And then this is a sixth month? This is a six-month endeavor is what his position is currently to see.
If he can manage.
If he can manage both and not having a full-time director. Because the full-time, where we were at with the full-time position before, we're not gonna have the mechanic. We're not gonna have, I mean, in defense to Sean, he's a heck of a mechanic. You know, he did, he did a lot for the vehicles, he kept the vehicles up, we weren't sending stuff out to be repaired. We're at the point now where we don't have the mechanic. So and we, and the unfortunate with Sean is he wasn't on the paperwork side, the administrative side. So this was something, I was put in kind of dealing with it for a stint and I just, it's too much for me to deal with. With all the administrative side that was needed, it was just a thought process and a good idea to put Emil in charge for the. Assisting our maintenance guy. Because what, right now, we're pulling the road crew off to do the lawn mowing and the maintenance stuff. And at the end of the day, yes, that's okay, that's road crew. But we also got a lot of roads that really need to be focused on, cut back, they're doing ditching. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other things that that crew should be doing other than mowing the ball field next door. And changing light bulbs and that stuff. And this is, this is, like I said, this wasn't just done overnight, it's been put into play. And a lot of thought across the board has been put into it to see how this is gonna work. And it's, it's a hybrid system, it's not like your typical D O T. setup or.
So I see you're reinventing the wheel.
Not reinventing, you're trying to save money.
The, I understand the whole mechanic situation, yes, I get it. What I don't understand is a Fire Chief, E M S Director, Public Works, three things that are all specialized under one person. I think the town deserves qualified individuals to run the two different departments.
I think what a lot of people didn't see was behind the scenes prior to this is that our Fire Chief was assisting Sean in a lot of the other aspects of the public works that people didn't give.
Let me rephrase that, the townspeople have always deserved a qualified leader in the public works as well as a qualified leader for the public safety.
Let's just clarify, he's not E M S. at all.
No, yeah, he's the Fire.
Which is different than E M S.
Yeah, he's, he's the Fire Chief, the E M A. Director, which is just a stipend job for 600 bucks, not even, I think maybe $400. a year. So I mean, it's just a, he's not, he's the Fire Chief.
Yep.
And with that being said, the availability to what he's doing for the public works right now. We are not gonna hire a person to do that at the price we're paying to have it done. And he's thorough, it's, that's the big factor, he's not, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're putting a person that is of paperwork side, administrative side in charge of that. Emil is in the office, that's what he does. He doesn't go out, he doesn't dictate what needs to be done. Junior, right now, is the Foreman. If something needs to be done, Junior tells him, they have a meeting every Monday morning with the crew. And they go over what they doing. If Emil was to receive any calls from people or this throughout the town, then he would relay that to Junior. Junior would then figure, you know, if we had something to wash out or a tree down like with that big, that they spoke of that. Big wind gust come down and took down the trees, I was at that, that was a mess. We also had public works there. Junior came down along with Marky with the loader because we needed that to clear the road, so. And then they planned that Monday that they had to go back and clean it all up, so they set up times and it's just, so far, it's worked well. You know, like I said, it's a six-month deal, this is nothing that we put into play permanently. We said, we all agreed that this, you know, you've got anything to add, it should.
I appreciate the, in the interim, that's, I get it, I mean, you need to have somebody you can turn to. But in the long term, it seemed like you're working this direction.
So the idea was really interim, because he's a department head right now, he's already doing the job as a department head. When the Town Manager gets in here and settled, him and the Fire Chief can get together and figure out, am I gonna continue doing it? Or are we gonna hire a Public Works Director? So that's where we're at right now, that's why he's interim, so.
And going forward.
If we did nothing right now, we would have a crew down there running a muck.
He's doing a great.
So again, I understand perfectly the interim need.
Yeah, so the only other department heads that we would put into it, because not one of us can take that job, it'd have to be the entire board.
I, I understand.
So are we gonna put Parks and Rec down there?
No, no, I think there needs to be a head of the Public Works Department.
So right now, he's just the interim.
I, I get that.
And it's just administrative.
No, Emil specifically, but the system sounds like you're gearing towards getting away from hiring that position because it would save money.
No decision's been made.
No, no decision.
I could tell you that I've met with Emil and the crew and things are going smoothly right now. Work's getting done, communication's excellent. But it's, this is for six months, we'll revisit it, you know, during the budget season and.
How'd you come up with the six months, it's been months since Sean's been gone, all right?
Because I actually requested that it be temporary.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I mean.
The wording showed it that it would be permanent and I was like, this needs to be temporary. Because we are gonna get questions, the citizens are gonna wonder why.
The problem going forward, I'm gonna be honest with you with the old way, I don't want a recreation.
The standard way.
The standard way, the recreation of what we had and what I've dealt with for a year, I won't do it again, number one. Number two, it's gonna be on the townspeople because you're gonna have an increase, a pretty rugged increase in that department to go with the old way. With the hiring of them, you know, because you're not, the director should not been doing the four things, five things that, you know, he wasn't in charge, he wouldn't let the crews go. There was just a lot of stuff that was inoperative in that system. And for a director to step in, the director is gonna do all the paperwork, do the administrative side, but also is the director gonna go out and fix the trucks? No, technically, no, it shouldn't be, that's not how that works. You go to any, you go to Gorham, you go to Standish, they all got mechanics, they all got different foremans for different, you know, you go over to Standish, I know they're a lot bigger. But they got multiple foremans and we don't have that type of money. And I don't think the taxpayers are gonna throw out the money for an $85,000 mechanic or a $100,000 Public Works Director. I just don't believe that's gonna happen, so we tried to look for a quick trial error to see if this is trial, if this is gonna work. It may not, it may blow up in our faces, but we don't know until we try and that's where we're at. It was no, there was nothing behind the scenes, I, I think if it works, great. If it doesn't, then we get a chunk of money that we've gotta physically bring to you guys and say, hey, what do you think? What do you wanna do? Because, I mean, you know, you're in the trade, you know how the mechanical side of it is, the, it's. The mechanic side right now is crazy, I own automotive stores, I can't find one, it took me a year to find a guy. And then to get somebody qualified for that position on a diesel mechanic, at the private level, you're looking at 80 to 100 grand right now. And then at the municipal level, yeah, if we could try to steal one from Scarborough or to steal one from Gorham, we may get 65 to 75. But it's still, I mean, I'm just being realistic and honest, I know a lot of people in the trade and they're getting the money.
I understand the need for a mechanic. I also understand to your point that it's cheaper and easier to hire the right person than is to get rid of, as you all know, you've spent your tenure here handling problems. A major concern I have is say there's a problem, say somebody mows down somebody's tree in their yard that shouldn't have, say somebody is caught, maybe, just hypothetically. No, no, say, say, for instance, employees are smoking marijuana in a town truck. Say, for instance, God forbid, somebody gets hurt on their job. Where's the responsibility lay in this scenario? Does the Fire Chief get fired over a public works issue? You know, I mean, where?
Right, I mean, on the administrative side, he's reported to, so say that job happened, say they're on the, they're on Dole's Ridge, they're ditching. And one of the guys not paying attention runs over another guy.
Right.
Well, okay, now that right there is on the person in hand in charge of that, which would be the Foreman.
So it's probably the system.
Well, at the end of the day, though, there is, everybody looks for blame, so you're looking at, stuff flows downhill. As it starts at the top and it goes down, it's the chain of command. So then, okay, they gotta report, why did that happen, Junior? I don't know, he goes to, you know what I'm saying? You can't put it in that scenario, you can't put it on the director that's administrative sitting home unless he did something wrong and didn't apply or make sure.
I'm sure there are plenty of lawyers that could bring it back to the town rather than.
Right, I mean, ultimately, it always.
I guess what I'm getting at is it seems rather short-sighted and it doesn't seem like the best effort we could do for the town to combine every major department. Now even talking about the money under, under one umbrella, one person is gonna figure out if, hey, we need a plow truck and we need a fire truck. Which, we're getting a plow, or I'm gonna try for a plow truck harder than a, no, the townspeople deserve people who will advocate for their departments.
Right, which, he says all sides of it, though, we are getting a fire truck, we're getting a new rescue and we're getting a plow truck. I mean, I, and I'm speaking hypothetically for Emil because I've worked with him. And this is just what I've dealt with personally here in this system as a selectman. He has been level-headed, I don't see. and at the point in time, you're, you're a hundred percent right, but it's you. You're the depict, whether I get a new fire truck or the public works get a new, it's you, and it's you, and it's you, and it's you. It's, it's, it's.
I use the word advocate for, because every budget needs somebody to advocate and, and push the agenda of the department. Anyway, and, and again, this is not an shout at Emil. I know and love Emil, and I respect Emil. It, the, the system that you laid out there just seems a little short-sighted to me, that's all.
Thank you for that. And like I said, it is short-term, too.
I, well, I hope so.
You know, and that's, it's, it's a trial and error. It really is. But on the flip side of it, then, and this is gonna come play at budget time, that if we decide not to, then it's gonna be thrown out to you and the townsfolk. Okay, well, we need this job, this job, and this job, and we're increasing this by this much. Are the taxpayers ready to take an increase in taxes to, to go with the, 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 the old way or the, the normal way? And, and that's, that's, that's what it'll be down to. So, you know, if they vote it down, we're stuck. If they vote for it, then great, let's go. But this is what we had to play with at this point in time, because I couldn't do, I, I was trying.
A month ago, we were in, we were up to our eyeballs in need of paperwork and administrative work done. We had multiple, um, audits and inspections, and the paperwork is on a timeframe. It has to get back in, um, and corrected, whatever, everything that was found had to be corrected, or there was gonna be a fine. So, you know, none of us have that time at that, at that point a month ago, and so we put this in place. There's, there's also everything, you know, there's so many different trainings that have been lax. It's similar, uh, simple things like bloodborne pathogens and lockout-tagouts. And all of these things have to be up to date for these audits. All the paperwork has to be, you know, in one spot. Everything has to be organized and ready to pull out in a binder when that auditor shows up unannounced. So we were sorely lacking there. So Emil's, um, ability and, and the way he's organized too, he's got job descriptions and he's being, he's updating things, right? And it's all going through us. Don't, you know, everything is coming across our desk and we're looking at it, rewording it, um, making tweaks to it, right? But we're trying to get all of this up to date. It's only been a month, right, and we've made good strides in it so far. And once that organization has taken place, it's gonna be much easier to keep up to date, once it's done.
He's versed in it for the department, so he can slide easily versed in it.
Oh, yeah, a lot of the, the, a lot of the public works, a lot of the public works ordinances and, and, and requirements follow suit with the fire side. Your, 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 you know, your fit testing, your bloodborne pathogens, all the sexual, everything is.
They're all the same.
Right, so he basically was, it was nice for him, because he just took the fire and EMS side of it and reworded it. And, and made it to what it should be. So, I mean, it helped with the paperwork side, admin side, once again, so. We'll see how it works.
That's, that's the, you know, temporary part of the whole thing, is how much of this can we get up to speed?
I, I had a quick question. Is there still, and I can't remember what it was, what the position in the town was. I wanna say it was safety officer for the town. Um, is that still there?
Safety officer.
They, they were in charge of making sure that all, all the
Civil defense?
No, it, it, and I know at one point Mike was there and the fire chief was pulling two positions for that. I, I just don't remember exactly what the name of that, what the title of that position was. But they were responsible to make sure all the, all the trainings were up to, all the required trainings are up to date. You lockout-tagout your
That's department heads.
So, so there's no longer that other, that other, we're not paying somebody to do that separate position.
The department heads were in charge of their departments and having their, 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 their yearly's up to date.
Gotcha. I did, I, I've been away from this part of it for a little bit and it, but I know at one point there was, in, in life, I don't, I wanna say it was like the town's safety officer or something. They made sure that all the extinguishers were up to date, all that.
Yeah. Compliance, yeah.
The compliance, okay, I just, I couldn't remember what it.
I'm assuming before my time.
That's all been integrated into the different.
The department heads.
Cool. I, like I said, I just, I didn't know if we still had a separate, because all the things you're saying would have fallen under that category, and if we're already paying for somebody for that and they're not doing it, that's a bigger problem.
I can tell you that in the budget, there was no line item for that, so.
Okay, like I said, I just, I know at one point there was a separate position that, that covered all that, and that's why I was curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess, anybody else wanna chat while we're going?
Jason Smith, Morgan Lee. A lot of things that we do in town was public hearings for. Uh, is there any thought about as we get towards the end of this interim six-month stint, having a public hearing, maybe talking about, um, budgeting costs of doing things sort of the way that they are right now with Emil as the interim? Or going back to having two different positions, and I think kind of opening that up to the townspeople, you might get more discussion than you want, but, um, it might be kind of a good gauge on what the townspeople think. Like you were talking about, it comes down to budgeting, but it's like, what, what, it's, what are we budgeting?
There'll certainly be public hearings when we get to the budget.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I understand what he's saying, is if we get approaching the end of this and we wanna make a decision, instead of our decision, hold a public hearing, let the people, the town come in, weigh in on it, because a lot of it's gonna go on them with the, the budget side of it.
And it can be done prior to budgeting.
So. Right, right, I mean, Emil's very good. He'll have the price, he'll have the, the funding laid out of each way.
So, to, to your point, it's gonna have to be done before budgeting.
Yeah.
Because his term is basically to the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
And budget, the town meeting doesn't happen till March.
Correct.
So we kinda need to get that figured out and figure out, you know, which way we're gonna go with the budget, so that when we put a proposal together, okay, this is the way the townspeople, we'll kinda get the consensus that this is the way they wanna go.
Yep.
You know, and go from there.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, I think it's a great idea.
Anything else on that before I move on to my next topic?
Oh, it's a stipend position. Sorry.
Just logistically, stipend position? How does that work where he's already salaried? It's, it just adds on to M-PERS and all the other associated?
Stipend, he's not paid hourly. So when he is.
I don't think he's getting M-PERS on the stipend.
No, 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 the M-PER, the stipend is just a straight stipend like.
It's just a straight. Ten ninety-nine, basically, or?
No, it's a payroll.
It's taxed.
Yeah, it's taxed through the town. There's no benefits. There's no, you know.
Yeah, I just did, that was.
Yeah, that's it. There's nothing put into it. It's just a, like us.
Yep.
We, we don't have any Bennys or anything. We just pay the stipend.
Right, yeah, I just didn't know how it worked out where he's already salaried. Thank you.
It's like us. We get nothing. Let's complain about that.
Yeah.
David. I wanna raise.
Move to a chair.
I'll make a motion. No, but I, I do wanna make a comment, though. We do have a town manager now. So he's gonna be your advocate for the departments. He's gonna call the department heads out on things that he doesn't see right. Right? That's why we have a town manager now. So he can manage the department heads in the town. When it comes to budget season, he's the guy doing the budget.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be us, so.
At the end of it, we finalize it.
We finalize it, but.
He brings.
He's gonna be doing the budget.
And there'll be a budget hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's new. It's a new thing, but.
And it's a learning curve for all of us, so. Just bear with us for a few months and.
Yeah.
Are you, so, uh, David Bonney Lord Lofman again. So are you, uh, educating us tonight that if we do have complaints, concerns, something to offer, suggestions, ideas, we don't get to bring them to you all anymore?
No, you can. We're still gonna be here for you.
Yeah, on Thursdays, but he's here all week.
He's gonna be running HR, operations of the town on a daily basis, because we can't be here all the time. Right? That's why we moved to a town manager's form of government.
I, I'm sure this will all shake out. I was just kind of.
But I may say, you need to speak to the town manager.
I, I hear you there. That's sort of where I was going.
He's very approachable.
He is approachable, but.
Sort of offload.
Just like the departments, they, they should really not supersede the town manager. They should be going to him first before they come to us with concerns.
At the same time, if I heard Jason a few minutes ago fill in tonight for that eight-minute gap that we happened to have last week with that flow chart that he was summarizing.
Yeah.
I heard select board at the top and town manager after the select board. I'm not saying, Mr. Castriata, that you're sub to the select board, but I heard the flow chart go that way.
Actually, the top is a legislative body, which is the town. That's why I was.
Yeah, they're number one. The town itself is number one.
The board's still placed there, Bonnie, because it's a, it's a checks and balances. That way you don't have a single person that with the full authority to do whatever they want. We still, the board's still there to keep.
I kinda get it, but make your point again, David, what you're trying to say to us tonight. We, we've come tonight and you all are there and doing some of the talking, and Matt's doing some too. But, uh, this is going normally, right? The way a select board, it's still a weekly select board meeting would go.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes.
And at budget time, Matt might be more, well, I'd, I'd prefer you tell us, not me.
So during budget season, he will be doing the budget for like municipal complex. He'll be working with the department heads with their budgets instead of the three of us. Like, I didn't go through it last year, but I watched it.
Okay, the municipal complex.
We made the budget as a board last year, whereas it would be transferred to him.
For the municipal complex, you just said?
Yeah, and then working with the department heads with their budget.
For the whole town.
The whole.
Okay.
That's now on his plate.
We would expect that. I mean, we've, you know, we've gone through a lot to
Yeah.
have this position, and I'm sure he's gone through a lot to bravely take it on. Okay.
He is a boots-on-the-ground kinda guy, so.
Loafers.
Oh, come on. All right. Oh, Jake.
He's not done. He only ever, that was his first one.
He had a list, come on. Speaking generally, uh, at this point.
Genuinely or generally?
Generally. What did I say?
She wasn't sure.
Apparently. What is the process, or is there one, uh, if there's a disagreement between a citizen and the CEO? Who is the appeal above him if there is one?
Should go to the town manager.
Wow, that, like. That's town manager, or is it to the select board, or does the planning, is the planning board in here kind of on an equal plane? Is that what I'm understanding?
If he goes, if the town, if a, this, if a citizen has a complaint, just like in the fire department or public works, if they have a complaint with a certain person, they shouldn't, unless that person is the problem. Uh, let me read.
There's a chain of command.
There is, yeah, you just gotta, it's a flow. You just gotta follow the flow. So you're gonna supersede someone who might not be the problem, but could fix the problem, and you're just gonna go to us.
And ju- so just to be, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a personal, like, not an argument, not that he's done, he hasn't like punched me in the parking lot or anything like that. It's a, it's more of a interpretation of the zoning laws in this case. So it's like, okay, so if, if there's a disagreement there, where does it go?
I would, I would assume it's gonna go to the town manager, so he can take the complaint.
And the town manager would follow up with.
He needs to find out. Follow up with the CEO.
Talk to the CEO, talk to the town council.
Planning board, planning board's in charge of ordinances, so if the, you know.
So if a, say, for example, an occupancy permit is granted that, in the citizen's opinion, shouldn't have been, is it too late at that point?
I don't know if it's gonna be reversed. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, that's a town council question. And I'll be making most of those phone calls.
But, yeah, I, I don't.
By town council, you mean the select board, or like including you? Is that the council?
Attorney.
Attorney, council.
Okay, I'm with you.
Council.
Because it's, in Standish, this is a council. They call it something different, but it's.
That's a town council.
Town attorney.
Yeah, yeah. So I was just like, okay, what's the council?
Or even MMA at that matter, so it's not costing us.
Right.
Okay. Hopefully, nothing gets that far and it's not a problem, but I just was curious because, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? No? Laura, you'd like to speak? Okay. You sure?
All right.
Okay, so, sorry.
Now it's time?
It's time.
Now it's time.
Were you opening them?
No, he passed it to me.
Oh, oh, you're pa- okay.
All right.
Tammy's opening. These are all the bids for our, uh, equipment that went out to bid.
Wow.
Looks like we.
I was expecting to to have, all right, that, that.
We'll be opening them. Sure, we'll be listing them off and
That'll be there.
We will be discussing them, I would say probably, and giving out, discussing them next week.
Okay.
Or.
Um, yeah, we'll open them and we'll list them and announce them. And then we will go back and discuss them all, um, because they, you know, we have the right to reject any or all. Um, we'd like to see what the, uh, prices we're gonna be getting, right, and discuss that. And if it's better to scrap them.
Right.
We, this'll, we'll, we'll be discussing it, yeah, thank you. That is why I brought it out here. I know. But I wanted to open this one first, because it's like truck seven, nine, and thirteen, and fourteen, and nine, and the latter truck.
Could you just say, all of these bids coming in are for, um, all of the vehicles that have been advertised the past couple of weeks?
Yes.
In the shopping guide? That, that'll help folks maybe.
Yes, exactly. Well, yeah, and they, uh, some people have been kind enough to, put the actual ad here.
Oh, that's good.
They have picture, you know, they took the pictures off the website and wrote their number right next to it, which is a big help. So what I will do is, we have this list, and I have a single page for each truck, and I will just put the dollar amount, and so we'll have everybody like under truck seven and everybody that bid on truck nine, so we can have them all listed here and see them easily when we start discussing them. So truck seven, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Truck nine, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Truck thirteen, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Truck fourteen, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And the latter truck? Let's just do it this way. Sixteen hundred dollars. Yeah. Yep. I think so.
So there's been a request in the audience about whether or not who the bill, the bid is from. Is that public, or is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess. That is a name. We don't need no contact information.
No.
Yeah.
Robert Ferguson. Rob- Robert Ferguson is the one that bid on. Truck seven Truck seven is the forty-nine-hundred-two-thousand international dump truck. Is that what you want, Jason?
Just him and what he deals with.
Okay, let me see, can I see his page real quick for you? So, yeah, so, Robert Ferguson bid on truck seven, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. He bid on truck nine, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. He bid on truck thirteen, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. He bid on truck fourteen, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, and he bid on the ladder truck nine of sixteen hundred dollars. That's what he's getting.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just let me give it to me and I'll stick with it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Going to use that this time.
I'll, I'll use it this time. You know, they're, they're nice envelopes. They have sticky stuff on them, and they, see, see, see what they do? They don't, yeah.
Sure.
Sure they do.
Maybe can you slice those over?
I don't use.
Yeah, while you're doing that.
How about if you opened them?
Yeah, and then, yeah, that's a great idea.
There you go.
He staples them. Divisional labor.
There you go. So, item number seven, truck seven. The equipment low bed trailer, oh, okay, that's not truck seven. That's item number seven, the low bed, which is on your list. Hang on a minute. I have it right here. I'm sorry. The, the, that's actually number eight. The equipment low bed trailer for fifteen hundred and thirty dollars. Pete Childs.
Was it twenty-five?
Pete Childs.
Pete Childs.
What was the price? What was it?
Sixteen hundred?
Fifteen thirty.
Fifteen, fifteen thirty.
Fifteen hundred thirty.
Sorry, sorry, that was.
All right. Here's a bid sheet for truck nine. Truck nine. McLean for one thousand dollars. Truck fourteen for four thousand dollars. And truck eleven, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Jason Rowe. Truck thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars. Assault brine equipment. S.A. McLean for fifteen hundred dollars. We have a snowplow truck, number thirteen, and snowplow truck, number fourteen. Thirteen is the international for thirteen hundred and eighty dollars, Blaze Whitney. And the truck bid on the orange international, truck fourteen, for four thousand seven Truck number seven, the international from McLean for fifteen hundred dollars. Truck eleven for McLean, fifteen hundred dollars. Jason Webster, fifteen hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred, a lot better.
Ladder truck nine. McLean for one thousand dollars. Bidding on the two trailers. The flat bed equipment trailer, hang on a second. O and M LLC, it says. Seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the equipment trailer, seven hundred, the enclosed equipment trailer, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
We remember how much we paid for some of these behind us.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah.
And that'll be taken into account.
Sorry.
A little therapy. Not a whole lot of discussion, but. For me, the question is, the enclosed trailer is questionable for the, for the value?
Yeah, that, that's, no, I even close.
Right.
Sorry, I just, yeah. Had a zero behind that, we may be talking seventy-five hundred, but we're a little off on that trailer.
Okay.
I think it's a pretty straightforward, the, the truck eleven, that, right here, truck eleven, high bid.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight hundred, that's, that's a-
That looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Truck seven, there's two bids, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifteen hundred. Truck nine, we have two bids, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and one thousand. Truck eleven, we had two bids at fifteen hundred dollars and one bid at twenty-eight hundred dollars. Truck thirteen, we have a bid for five hundred and fifty-one dollars, a bid for thirteen hundred and eighty, and a bid for fifteen hundred dollars. Truck fourteen, we have three bids, one for five hundred and fifty-one dollars, one for four thousand, and one for four thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. On the ladder truck, we have two bids, one for one thousand dollars and one for sixteen hundred dollars. And we have one bid on the brine equipment for fifteen hundred dollars. On the bid for the flat equipment trailer, the wooden deck, we have a bid for seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we have a bid for fifteen hundred and thirty dollars. And then, again, on the enclosed trailer, seven hundred and fifty. So, um-
We'll discuss that, I think, in office, but-
Have a ladder truck who did the bid, McLean and O?
Tammy, question. If we're awarded the bid, when does it have to be paid for?
When?
Yeah.
It's, I think it's going to be paid for relatively when, probably, three business days and removed from the town's property within a week.
Yeah, we'll notify all of the high bidders and then, you know-
When, when will you do that?
Well, we ought to be doing that probably, um, it, yes, early next week.
We'll have the answers for these for next week.
And then send out letters to everyone, congratulate them on the bid.
We got their numbers, I believe.
Yeah, we have everything that we need.
Okay.
And we'd probably like to have it done, gone within ten, ten to fourteen days.
My question, question is this. I, I'm, I, I've been on the trailer and was the high bidder, if, on the low bed trailer. If I'm awarded that, I'm leaving tomorrow for a week.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking.
All right.
We won't discuss it till next Thursday. We'll give the answers next Thursday.
Okay, then I will have a-
A week from that.
Okay, that, that's fine. I didn't, because I, I'll be up north for a week.
We just don't want these stuff here for a week's on end.
Right, we'll give everybody, you know, a week to ten days to remove it from the property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, once they're, once we notify them, they've won the bid.
Yep.
Thank you, Pete.
And the two people for the ladder truck that bided were Steve McLean and Robert Ferguson.
Hey, just a quick question. How, how old is the brine equipment?
That I don't know.
I honestly-
Five?
The only thing I would say is we, we want to look at the cost and, and what it was and not just, because we want to get rid of it, get rid of it.
What's a brine? It's the tank and some hosing.
Because I know that was all bought, if I remember correctly, brand new, but I don't remember how, how many years ago.
Yeah.
The two skid tanks and everything are not in, that's the brine tank.
The steel tanks aren't included.
The, the other skid tanks with the engines and the, it is all, yeah.
Okay. Like I said, I just want to make sure that, kind of like with the enclosed trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
I don't know.
Just because we want to get rid of it, a seventy-five bid on a, on a trailer that, that would list it at seventy-five hundred or whatever it does list at.
Right.
Um, because I do know, I, it wasn't that long ago, because I, I know it's within five years.
Yeah. We should be able to look back, I think.
When they got it, so I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm on board, but if we paid twenty thousand dollars, then yeah, it was probably-
I mean, there's depreciation, and I get that, but I mean, that's a reason, if you get a twenty thousand dollar thing and then somebody offers, and I didn't catch how much, but seven hundred worth, then it's worth holding on to trying to beat you with.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Taken into account. Thank you, Chris. We, yeah, we're going to discuss all of these back in, in office, and then we'll lay out the timetable for everybody for, you know, notifying everyone and giving them time to come and pick up their equipment. And we want to congratulate people who bid and thank them all. Thank everybody for bidding. Don't want to let that go unnoticed either. We appreciate everybody who bid and had interest in this equipment, and we'll be in contact, you know, early next, middle of next week.
Yeah.
It, it takes a little bit longer now to get things out in the mail than it used to, so.
No.
So.
Yeah, I think, if nobody else has anything, I think-
I'm just going to read the announcements.
I mean, everybody knows, you know, so we can probably-
Oh, thank you so much, Matt. Yes.
Okay.
The final, um, do you want to, no? Yes?
Do you want to do it?
The select board office hours and the-
Yeah, so the select board office hours are Thursdays, two P.M. to eight P.M. The on-air meeting time is Thursdays at seven P.M. Transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine A.M. to four P.M., and Wednesday, twelve to four P.M. A transfer station's ticket must be attached to your vehicle windshield for the disposal of all items. Transfer station's tickets are available at the town office for twenty dollars. No sticker is required to use the swap shop. Transfer station does not accept brush, yard clippings are hazardous waste. Riverside Recycling in Portland takes hazardous waste. General assistance applications are available from the select board office during normal business hours.
Matt, could, I talked with the girls in the office, and since Nikki's not here, all we did, all I did was cross out select board office and rode in town office.
Okay.
So, they're-
Sure, yes, the general assistance applications are available during normal business hours at town office. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation, and must be signed and returned to the G.A. administrator or the town clerk's office. Planning board meets at the municipal complex the first and third Monday evenings at seven P.M.
I believe that there is a planning board meeting. We read their agenda this coming Monday, and we do have technicians available to air[1747.91]